Good evening, I'd like to call the Stanley County Board of Commissioners regular meeting to order on September the second, two thousand and fourteen at seven P M. Thank you all, everyone being here tonight. Appreciate you showing up and I don't see any of the media here, but yes we do, there he is, there he is. Got one back there on the second row, but thank you for coming, appreciate y'all being here too. At this time, I'll ask Vice Chairman Donovan for invocation.
I was watching the news a little bit tonight and have been paying attention as you all have been as well to what's going on in our world and it just reminded me the, of the chaos and the, and the, I guess the confusion, certainly the confusion that I have in my mind. I never thought I'd see days like today, or like we have today and certainly our thoughts and prayers go to those who, who in service to our country and to our efforts are certainly being treated with disrespect and being beheaded and things of that nature. But it caused me to think about, you know, what, what would Jesus ask us to do? And he actually asked us to love the Lord your God with all your soul, all your might, all your strength. Love your neighbor as yourself. And then one of his followers suggested that when we needed wisdom, that we should ask for it. So my prayer tonight is for those things, that we would love God the way we should, we'd love our neighbors the way we should, and that we would ask for the wisdom to guide us and direct us, not only us, but every person who has responsibility at a national, state, and local level. Let's pray. Well, my prayer tonight comes from the fact that there is so much confusion and frustration and, and lack of sense about things that are going on in our world. We know that human dignity is, is not honored. We know that the value of human life often is not honored. Of all that we struggle with, what can we do about it? But we also know that everything that's ever taken over the world with, with goodness has started with some small little local group. We ask that that, that revolution and that revival might start with us as individuals. So Lord, I ask tonight that we as individuals would seek to love you the way that you've asked us to, the way that you've guided us to, and through the examples that you set. And because we love you, that we would treat our neighbors with respect and dignity and honesty, and that we would love each other, and that we would do what was best for each other, always. And as this board seeks to do what's best for the citizens of our jurisdiction, I would also ask that you provide wisdom to any official elected or any other way set into place, that they might ask you for wisdom and guidance and direction, that we might all do what's good for each other, what's good for our mankind, as we continue to look and move forward. Be with those who are serving around the world, pray especially in defense of our country, keep them safe, and help us as we seek to do what's right. We ask these things in Jesus' name, amen. Ask you to stand with me now and say the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands for one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite, and just as for all. I did forget, I would like to recognize, we've got two of our candidates out here that's gonna be in the fall election, Joseph Burleson and Bill Lawhorn. Thank y'all for coming tonight and showing interest in our meeting that's going on in the county. Are there any adjustments or changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented. Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval, seconded by Vice Chairman Donovan. All in favor, say aye. Motion carried. First item is the Health Department Amendment for the physical two thousand and fourteen, fifteen animal control budget and appropriation of funds. Dennis is not here because of surgery to his heel, Andy will do the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Charles Hartzell, who's our supervisor of animal control, is also here this evening to, so if you have any specific questions to animal control, Mr. Hartzell's probably the better person to ask than, than me. But as you, you may recall, the county received a one hundred and forty, I believe it's about a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, one hundred and forty-six or fourteen, from the estate of the late Nancy Henderson. Those funds have just been, were recognized and were placed in a special designated fund, and we hadn't done anything since recognizing those funds, but the animal control is seeking to, included in the supplemental information we gave you this evening, is sort of a three year track of those funds, a budget, and obviously, you know, as with budgets, some, some years we may go a little more than what we projected or a little less, but, so you can see that. But this year, they're seeking to place eighty-five thousand, sixty dollars from that special, special fund into the general fund to begin to make some improvements, excuse me, to the facility, and to the programming that's going on there at the shelter. And those will, you've got this listed, but just to name a few, some spay neuter costs associated with animals to help offset that cost for the local rescue groups, and it'll help to, also to subsidize the cost for pets of income-eligible homeowners. That's something we used to do, but we haven't done in, in a few years because of a lack of funds, and so this will enable us to restart that program. Some educational material around spray, excuse me, spay and neutering, construction of a fence for the adoption area at the shelter, so folks can actually get out there and, you know, see the behavior of the animal firsthand in a, in a different area other than just the kennel. H V A C unit for the shelter itself and for the kennels, that, that area is not air-conditioned, and that's something that the Department of Agriculture is pushing down. It's not something that's completely mandated yet, but it's coming, and so we're gonna try to get ahead of the curve and take care of that A C at the shelter for those, for those animals, so. And there are a few other items for this year, and then some of those will continue into next year. Obviously, we'll do that as part of next year's budget, and then, and then filing in sixteen, seventeen. And so I'd ask the board if you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions, if any? Not what's the pleasure, the board.
Can I make the motion when you approve?
Motion made by Commissioner Ashudo, seconded by Commissioner McIntyre. All in favor, say aye. Next item on the agenda is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Development Process for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen biennium. Presenter is Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've actually gotten some feedback from a couple of you about this specific item. This is, every two years, the county association that we're a part of develops a set of goals, and they take recommendations from all the counties all over North Carolina, and then they meet as a, a body and begin to bring those down into a manageable number of goals that they can work towards advocating for, you know, with the General Assembly during the fifteen, sixteen biennium. And so this is just the beginning of that process where they're seeking to goals from, from different counties, and so this is your opportunity to put forward proposed goals. I know that some of you have talked about the strategic mobility formula, and that's the impact on the strategic transportation plan, and the mobility formula being very, very much geared towards congestion and away from traffic safety, which helps rural areas, and so my guess is that that may be one of the items you may discuss tonight. But also Melanie House is here, our library director, and I think she would like to speak with you, and she, we gave you some information in advance of the meeting, so that you could look that over, but if you would so recognize Melanie, she would like to speak with you on behalf of libraries and the Library Association of North Carolina.
Melanie, would you like to address the board, come forward if you would?
Thank you so much for taking a few minutes to listen to my request. I, I and librarians across the state are asking our local Board of Commissioners to include some sort of language in their legislative goals that deals with public libraries, specifically the state aid formula that the state uses to allocate funds. This year, they have gone away from that formula, capping the two largest counties' funds as a way of reducing the total amount of state aid that they're supplying. Well, it doesn't affect us this year, it is certainly one of those trickle-down cuts that I do foresee happening in the following years. Locally, in the fiscal year two thousand, two thousand and one, our library received a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in state aid. Then, of course, the economy tanked in oh eight, and last fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, we received only a hundred and nine thousand dollars in state aid. So we've lost a little over twenty-one thousand dollars in the last thirteen or fourteen years. And we, librarians do feel that this is gonna continue to slide, so we would request that you at least consider adding some sort of legislative goal for funding for public libraries.
Have you any questions?
Any questions?
The twenty-one thousand, is that over the, the, a period of years, or is that twenty-one thousand a year?
No, that's over the period of years.
Anyone else have any question? Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
So just to, this is your opportunity to put forward some goals. You can see the, there's like a, a packet of information, but one of those is a proposal form, and so we can do that for each goal that you want submitted. Certainly, we can do more than that, we can do, you know, seek to have other counties put forward a resolution as well, if you so chose, so just wanted to share that with you, and then if you, if you can let us know which goals you'd like to put forward either at this meeting, but they're due by September nineteenth, so one of, this is really the last opportunity unless you call a special meeting or recess this meeting to, to put any goals forward for staff to fill out and send in.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bragg, go ahead.
Oh, I think after we had the presentation at the cog meeting last Thursday, Tuesday, and what we heard about the state's new formula for roads and the concerns over twenty-four, twenty-seven, that, that definitely needs to be a goal that N C A C C should look at. I'd like for us to have that as one of our goals to send in. I'd also like to see us do a resolution encouraging other small counties such as us that are, and Lindsay can address this a little bit about how we're being left out of this situation, and it also has to do with broadband and lots of things that concern us, and I'd just like to see that as one of our goals, and also like to include this, the library as, as a goal, encourage other counties that are affected by this to go ahead and hopefully, when you get the state association behind these things, it helps a lot. Doesn't mean it's gonna happen, but they do work hard for us, so I think we need to put them to use, and we don't usually present a lot of goals from Stanley County, because we're usually right in line with what most other counties want anyway, but I think we need to take an initiative on this and do that. Thank you.
I agree with you, Commissioner McIntyre, and I, if we don't do something, then this trickle-down effect's gonna hit us too, and we think a quarter cent's gonna be bad, that we're gonna look at more quarters cents and also property tax, so that this burden's gonna be passed down to the counties, and I just don't see how we can, you know, we've got to do something to try to stop the tide just rolling over us.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna add to what June said and, and compliment Justin Burr on the map that he provided to the cog the other night. We've asked for a copy of that, and it may be that's something we can post. I printed one off today, he, he shared it with us, and it's not big enough to really hold up, but, but, but if you think about the state of North Carolina and, and realize as he's, as he's demonstrated, that there are three counties between the foothills and the far eastern, really, really rural counties, there are only three counties that do not have a four-lane road that runs through it, and those are Stanley County, Hoak County, and Hoak is, is a, a big part of that is actually Fort Bragg, and Caswell County, which is on the very northern, you know, part of our state, touches Virginia. So in that whole area from the foothills to the far eastern part of the state, we're the largest county by population that does not have a four-lane road through it, and I thought that was a very powerful demonstration, and it caused me to go back and look, and I did, and I had another map that demonstrated that there are certain counties within the state that got their transportation projects funded, that we've already looked at this map in a, in a previous meeting, that, that we're in an R P O, and there was only one county that got any money that's in an R P O, and that's, that's Watauga, and that's taking care of the ski business. And then another map that we had looked at in, in past meetings talks about the M C N C broadband, and we're one of eighteen counties in North Carolina that doesn't have that. I mean, we're in a donut hole, and, and we just, if we sit back and let it happen, it's gonna continue to happen. So I would, I would echo your comments that we need to let, certainly on the S T I, we need to ask the legislature if they would review that, and to give less emphasis to things like congestion and, and also even matching up specific economic activity areas which would favor those, those counties that have a lot of those areas and disfavor those counties like ours who may not have those. So I think we can work on that, but I, I would, I'm glad you're thinking that way, and I think that's what we ought to do.
Anyone else?
I like all these that Commissioner McIntyre and Commissioner Donovan said. Also, I'd like to do what we did last year and support restoring the lottery funds to education, 'cause looking down the road, our buildings are in pretty bad shape, Millingport, you know, like I've mentioned them before, and at some point, we're gonna pay the piper, and what they're doing is they're capping the, I think this year, they capped the money to re, to reimburse the, the counties at a hundred million dollars. So as lottery money grows, that percentage is just dropping, and, and I'm one that, and I really feel that teachers teach kids, buildings don't, but at some point, you just can't have badly deteriorated buildings. I look back at the history of Stanley County when they had the sewage in Millingport that was coming, seeping through the playground, that went on for a couple of years. They had all the bats up in New London in the, in the old building, and that wa, that went on for a couple of years till we finally got the money to clean that up. I mean, it's just a shame, some of these other movies, that these other buildings are just pretty bad, we'd either need to close them, consolidate them, or build new ones to replace them at some point, so I think that lottery funding, going back to what originally was promised, would be a good thing. I think it had some traction last year, a lot of legislatures had supported that, but it just never won any merits. I'd like to put that as a goal again.
Well, I've seen a couple of, of his campaign ads, he's promising to give us some of that lottery money back.
Well, we also, we also know that the association for the last two or three years has been consistent on its top three items in, in restoring the lottery as one of those top, top ones, and I imagine that will continue, and we certainly support that.
Can I add something? And I share what Peter said about the lottery funds, because that's gone down every year since it started. If you look at it, we're getting more money now, overall, for Stanley County than we've gotten in the past, but we're getting all that less money for buildings, which is what it was supposed to been for, when they changed how you could use the money, and in order for systems not to get rid of teachers, they let them use it for teachers and took it away from your capital project. So that left us with what, like six hundred thousand dollars a year at that one point, and we're still not back up to where we need to be to help us with our debt service. So I agree a hundred percent, that still needs to be a goal.
Anyone else? Andy, I think you've got some goals down. Come up anymore, we need to get them to him pretty quick. I reckon we're ready to move, we're ready to move on now, are we? Next item on the agenda is the Piedmont Natural Gas Request for Easement. Andy Lucas, presenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Our county attorney has actually worked closely with Piedmont Natural Gas on this item to make sure we've got all the, the land pieces of this and deeds and easement language correct. So if you have any questions, I may defer, defer to Jenny some on that. But essentially, they're upgrading their infrastructure in the South Albemarle area, and the county actually owns a vacant piece of property on Richardson Street in Albemarle, and there's a, actually a map in your packet of that parcel. And so this is just seeking to have an easement, a five-foot easement run across that piece of property along that western boundary, so they can upgrade their infrastructure in, in that, in that area of, of the city. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Get that information off on the tortue line?
It is the same provider, that's correct.
Well, tell them we might be awful lenient on if they'd go ahead and get us the information we've asked for, that they've been doing for a year. Anyone else have any questions? I don't have a question, but I, I remembered that. What's the pleasure, the board? I don't believe we need to, yeah, we do, we got to do this one.
That you're granting an easement, you do need to take action.
I make a motion, we grant the easement for Piedmont Natural Gas.
Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ashudo, and, well, Mr. Morton hit it too, but Mr. Ashudo got it first. All in favor, say aye. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the Albemarle to North Carolina Highway two hundred water transmission main project resolution. Andy Lucas is presenter.
Thank you, Mr. Man, or Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is an actual, an item the board had asked to, to put forward, specifically Commissioner Morton, very interested in this project, you, in, in your packet, you have a resolution. This project actually was, was approved by the U S Army Corps of Engineers back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. It was actually engineered by H D R in two thousand and nine, ten, and then the money for the project, although the project was approved, was never put in the budget as a result of the federal budget cutbacks and sequestration. And so we've been trying to, to get this funding back in place, we, staff has worked with the folks that we have con, our contacts at the U S Army Corps of Engineers, and it hasn't gone anywhere, and so I believe that Commissioner Morton's request wants to elevate this to the board's level and try to see if we can't get our legislative delegation involved and try to spur some action to get this project funded. This project's fairly critical from a water operations perspective, it creates redundancy in our system, it, it, which will improve water quality, also provide assurance of being able to provide water to businesses and residents in the western part of the county, and it also addresses some water quality issues in, in areas around Canton Road and on Austin Road. And so this, this project, it does require a twenty-five percent match, which the board committed to. This resolution just reaffirms your commitment to that. It's about a four-point-four million dollar project, and so at twenty-five percent, you're looking at just over a million dollars that the board had committed, and this would reaffirm that you're still committed to that. And so I would answer any questions. There is a map of the project in your, in your packets.
Well, I agree with Mr. Morton, if he did say that it was a good project, it is a very good project, we need it very bad, and I think we should re-elevate it. Anyone else have any comment?
I make one comment, I had the Stanley Water and Sewer Meeting. The last meeting we had, I was talking to Ms. Davis, and we were talking about various projects, and the Stanley Water and Sewer provides the funding for some of the projects, and the county does some of the projects. So I'm looking at a map that she had given us, I was reminding my, that I saw Canton Church Road, and I thought that project has been played around with for some time, and I just wondered what we were on, and I asked her if this was swas or, was Stanley Water and Sewer project, she said it'd be a county, and I said, well, how do we go about doing this? And she said, well, county commissioners need to take action on this matter. And so this covers, you know, from, from Highway seventy-three down Austin Road over to Richcrest Road from Ray Cross. Also, it includes Boss Road and Canton Church Road into Austin Road. So it appears to be, it's a, we, I propose that we pass this resolution, I'm gonna make a motion to pass this, to adopt this resolution, it's in our package, and of course, it will not happen while I'm on board, but I would certainly urge the county commissioners to take office in December to continue this effort for this project. So I'm making a motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion made by Commissioner Morton to adopt the resolution, do I hear a second?
I'll second, and I'll also make a comment that this is something that three of us have already voted for one time, and so it makes it easy for us to vote for it again, and I hope that we not only will pass the resolution, but we will take the opportunity through this season where maybe some of these elected officials will be here to, to grab their collar and say this is important to us. And one other thing that I, that I understand at least, and the manager can correct me if I'm wrong, but while we're making a commitment to the twenty-five percent match, that is, that is monies that will actually be raised through the sale of water, and so the users will actually be contributing to this match that's required, it's not something that comes from county funds, and so that is, I think, again, makes it especially interesting project, and as I said, I'd second the motion.
The motion was seconded by Vice Chairman Donovan. Any other questions?
One question, does Canton Road have water from the city limits out to Boss Road? There is water already along that part of Canton Road.
It goes up to, just before you get to Sam Road, up Canton Road, up, up by the vineyard. Any more? What? All in favor, say aye. Next item on the agenda is Public Safety Emergency Radio Project Refinancing. Andy, you're on again.
I'm on again. Our finance director had a prior commitment, is not able to be here tonight, so I'm gonna take this one on as well. The county is seeking to refinance a six-point-eight million dollar lease purchase agreement that we executed with Marauder Oil back in September of two thousand and thirteen for the construction of our new radio, public safety radio system. That included some radios as well for the sheriff's office, and we need to finance another one-point-one million associated with the E M S and Volunteer Fire Department portables and mobile radios. We had held off on executing that contract back in September of two thousand and thirteen, thinking we would be able to get a federal grant, but that federal grant did not come through, and so we can't wait for the next federal grant cycle, and then once you buy them or enter into a commitment, you can't get a grant. We can't wait another, another year because our system will be up and running, so we need to move forward with that. And so the, the collective financing will be eight-point-zero-three-seven million, which is actually less than what we initially anticipated, eight-point-five million. When I went back through and looked at the previous resolutions that we did for this project, it was eight-point-five, so it's about a half a million less than what we initially had thought. The six-point-eight million will cover the lease purchase agreement, which was the towers, the microwave equipment, nine-one-one council interfaces, and the sheriff's office radios. And the one-point-one-three million will be for the E M S and Volunteer Fire Department portable and mobile radios. You'll need to hold a public hearing prior to approving this resolution this evening. And the resolution, the, the amended resolution was actually at your, at the dais this evening with the new, the numbers in it from the, the bids that we opened from the local and regional banks that we received on Friday, I think, believe around three o'clock that that process closed, and so you've got the bids as well in that, at the back of that resolution that show you the, the four, we actually had four banks bid on that, and those interest rates are in there. We did receive a very favorable rate for this project, and will save about one-point-four million dollars over the, the term of the loan. Actually, it's almost, it's close to one-point-five, it's one-point. Actually, it's almost, it's close to one-point-five, it's one-point-four-nine-six with that rate of two-point-four-eight percent. So I would ask if there's any questions from the board, and then you just remember to hold that public hearing.
Any questions from the board? If not, I declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone like to speak for or against, come forward. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, oh, I think that we need to go in and approve the associated resolution that county manager talked about, you know, savings of one-point-something million over the life of the loan is a good savings, and the percentage rate looks great, so I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval. Seconded by Vice Chairman Donovan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, if I may at this point, point out that the county is committing to make this purchase and this project of a little over eight million dollars. And one of the things that we've done to help finance this project is to offer the sales tax on the referendum in November. And so I certainly want to make the citizens aware that that referendum is there to help with this project. The county is committed to that, and as Mr. Morton said earlier, we're not, he and I are not gonna be here next year when we do this. But at the same time, it's, it's real important that we make a decision as to how this project might be paid for. So county commissioners are working to try to make sure that the citizens understand that, and I would ask them to look for information. I think our web, on our website already, we have frequently asked questions. There are some folks who are, who are trying to get the information out into the community, and, and we need some assistance to make, be assured that we look at a sales tax rather than a property tax, because we'd be looking at about a two-cent property tax increase the next board might be. So I just want to take the opportunity to plug that and to let people know that, that this is on the, on the ballot in November and for them to look for it.
I don't worry about realizing that, but what really made me commit to this back early when we, the commissioners voted to do it, was the, also the equipment we've got is so old and communication is so bad, but we had a deputy in Norwood, which you have to switch your radios to another channel, you gotta remember to do that. And when you do, he didn't get his switched, and when they finally got it switched and communications back to Albemarle, the shots are already fired. So all we've got to do is have a deputy killed with bad equipment on it, and our liability's gonna be great, and that's just, that's really dangerous. I, I have to take my hat off to all the deputies, how y'all ride around this county, got to remember which word you put your radio while you're trying to talk to us. We've got to fix that problem, and not, not only that, but the firemen's having the same trouble. So we're just, we're wide open for a bad lawsuit, so if somebody gets killed or something. So we need to remember that this fall and go along with that quarter cent.
Mr. Chairman, I agree a hundred percent, and I'm surprised we hadn't had a tragic accident so far. And when we heard, when you could hear, it was so garbled, I don't know how they figured out who was doing what or where, because you couldn't make heads or tails of what was being said over the radio. And I was just, I'm surprised, and I'm totally in favor. And I don't remember everything Mr. Donovan said, Commissioner Donovan said, but, you know, a quarter cent sales tax will bring in one point, what, one million and one cent on the property tax, only brings about four hundred thousand, so I think that says it all.
What's the pleasure of the board? Have a, we already have it. Yeah, I've, I just, I've got that other stuff I won't pronounce tonight on here, but anyway, I got it real bad. Criteria to use design, build, construction, delivery method for the Stanley Community College.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. That's another project we've got going on. I think Lindsey once said earlier this year that the best way we can do for ourselves is do for ourselves, and you all, you all are definitely doing that right now. We're actually working in conjunction with the community college, and this, this is something the community college will actually pay for, but the county is being, being asked to be used as a, sort of the fiduciary agent to help facilitate the construction of a new facility on the community college campus, just, I guess it would be just north of the, the guard facility that's on College Drive. There's, there's some ser, some significant issues with their cosmetology facility, there have been for years, and they want, they want to build a new cosmetology facility, which is, has the potential to make money for the college based on the type of program it is. And so unfortunately, their enrollment's down, and it's been down because other, other community colleges around us have made investments in their cosmetology programs and their equipment, and we're falling behind. And so they're seeking to try to remedy that by working with us to build a new facility. They would like to have that facility open by August of two thousand fifteen, which really makes it difficult to do the standard design, and then you bid, and then you construct. And the General Assembly, thanks to folks like our representative, Justin Burr, gave us more authority in terms of different options to construct facilities. And one of those is a design-build-construction-delivery method, where you, you select a, a general contractor who designs it and builds it all at the same time through a RFQ process. And so as part of that process, the general statutes require you to establish criteria to justify using a design-build-delivery method for construction contracts. And we developed that for your review and approval this evening. And so that, this information was in your agenda packet, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. But really, the next step in this, we've, we've worked to hire an outside engineering firm to come in and give us a not-to-exceed cost for this facility. Those costs for the engineering will then be backed out of the loan proceeds when we take that loan. And then we'll move forward with hopefully getting LGC approval, getting the loan for that facility, constructing it, and then the community college through an MOU, which will, will execute with this, this board, or hopefully execute this board, and the community college board of trustees at some point in the near future, would basically just allow them, we'll, we'll back out those, that, those, that, the debt service from their current expense, so that there's a net neutral impact to the county, and then the community college will bear the cost. But they're able to do that as a result of some savings they've generated over, over the last few years at the college, as well as the savings they'll have from the lease of their existing space. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. There's, there's several specifics about the facility in your agenda packet in those criteria. I'll take tech questions at this time if there are any.
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, but I totally agree with this project. And my wife was associate dean at the college for many years, and one of her departments happened to be cosmetology, and it always brought in more money to the college than any other program over there. And as county manager has stated, that over the years, it's kind of dwindled because, you know, they're, and they're paying quite a bit rent where they are, and they couldn't upgrade the facilities and make it what it needed to be. So I think this is a must for the college, and it'd be, it'd be a moneymaker for them. Thank you. And I totally support it, and we'll make a motion that we go along with this.
Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval. Do I hear a second?
Second, and a quick comment about it too. When I did my workday at the college, and we did the tour, and one of the things that really just was surprising was the cosmetology department, because the hair business, especially with women, is supposed to be young, hip, unique, and stuff like that. And this, the equipment was so old, it was incredible, and they were using VHS tapes for instructional videos. It's like, man, what were the hairstyles, what they had VHS tapes out? I haven't seen a tape player in a while, but that's what they were still using for instructional videos. So, I mean, and then like Commissioner McIntyre said, the, the hair business is pretty profitable.
Well, you know, a lot of folks go over there on a regular basis, and where it is is fairly convenient, to move it anywhere else in the county would not make sense, so it's right there in a good place.
Seconded by Commissioner Ashudo. Any other questions? Any other comments? Not, what's the, what's the pleasure of the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Presenter is Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. There's actually a proclamation in your packet. I'd ask you also to recognize Ms. Vicki Coggins, who's here this evening. She's, I believe, a board member of the Esther House, which is our, our local agency, nonprofit agency that works with victims of domestic violence. And so in case Vicki wants to say a few words, I'd ask that you recognize her this evening.
Thank you. Happy to be here tonight, Mr. Chairman, and commissioners and ladies. I'm here actually as the president of the Esther House Board, I'm serving my second term in that role. And I hope everybody is familiar with the name Esther House and knows a little bit about it. But I'm really thankful that domestic violence is something that is being brought out more in the public for now, and, and not something that was a family shame and discussed behind closed doors and couldn't be made public. Because people are coming out now, and, and I think back to when, as many of you know, we had our shelter under the Crisis Council in Troy for a number of years over in Montgomery County, and now we are independent of that and, and our own 501(c)(3). But when we started trying to talk about having our own independent shelter and program, a number of people said to me, I don't believe Stanley County has a domestic violence problem. I never hear anything about it. Well, Stanley County has a serious domestic violence issue, just like any other county and, and any other state. So that is the primary reason that Esther House was founded, it is a shelter, but it's also a program, and we provide multiple services for victims, women, female victims and their children, who are the domestic violence victims. Esther House is a group of experienced professionals, survivors, and volunteers that work together to provide victims of domestic violence and, and sexual assault the resources and support they need to begin their journey to safety and independence. Since January first, two thousand fourteen, just this year, our emergency shelter has served seventy-eight different women and children. This equates to a thousand bed nights and three thousand eighty-one meals served. There've been eighty-one crisis calls to our twenty-four-seven crisis hotline seeking help, and these numbers are probably higher because we don't incorporate all of the court advocacy, support groups, and out-of-shelter service calls that are, that come in for, for such as that. But we're asking that you, and we appreciate your willingness to do this, proclaim and observe October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Esther House is providing you folks with a lovely wreath, and it is purple and teal. The purple signifies domestic violence. The teal signifies sexual awareness and sexual assault. And October being Sexual, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So we are hoping that you will display this prominently somewhere within your office area during the month of October. And then again, we'll be back sometime probably in, in March to ask that you proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. It's missing one item, there's a little plaque that's supposed to go here in the middle, and we didn't get that ready in time to get up here. But it'll be reversible, and it'll just simply state that October is, is what October is and what April is. And so we will be leaving that with you, and I want to invite you, on behalf of Esther House, to participate in two of our October events that we have. The first one, that's, you may remember it from last year, it was the first year we had done it, was pretty popular and received a lot of attention. And that's when we had a silent vigil on the courthouse steps, and we had shoes representing all the domestic violence victims, those that had died in North Carolina during the previous year. And they were indicative of the age and the sex of the victims. And when you see little shoes, it's almost more than you can stand to know that little children, six months old and, and younger sometimes, infants, are victims of domestic violence. And then we will have on the next, that's on the twenty-second of October, and then on the twenty-third, we'll have our special service, again, at First Street Methodist Church. This will be the fourth year that we've done this, and our speaker this year is, speakers are Ron Kimball, who is the Assistant City Manager in Charlotte, and his wife Joan, Jan. They lost a daughter to domestic violence, their only daughter, a couple, just recently, within the last couple of years. Trained professional lady and fell victim to a, a guy that she had been dating, was trying to break up with, and unfortunately lost her life. So I'm going to present this to the chairman, and we hope that you will display it, and we thank you for your support, and we look forward to working with each of you as we all come together to help change lives in a positive way.
I guess I'd make a motion when you approve the resolution.
Motion made by Commissioner Ashudo for approval. Seconded by Commissioner McIntyre. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the selection of two board members to attend the meeting regarding the former Ridgecrest Elementary School facility. Presenter is Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. There's been some activity around the Ridgecrest Elementary School. There's been some interest in agricultural school out there, there's been some interest from the community college out there, there's been a lot of different groups that have expressed interest in that school, and I, but I believe that Superintendent Griffin is going to host a community meeting to talk with the folks about some potential uses for that Ridgecrest Elementary School facility. It's gonna be later this week, on, at, on Thursday, at the school's central office at seven o'clock. And they're asking, obviously, it doesn't have to be two board members, but we could have, you could have as many as two board members attend that meeting so that the county can stay abreast of what's going on with that school and that community.
I have had a couple of meetings with them, and I wouldn't mind being one of them, and anyone else would be willing to go with me with that, I'd certainly appreciate it, so...
I wouldn't mind being the other one.
All right. You can go then. Does that suit the board? We need a motion, let's have a motion on.
I make a motion that Chairman Dennis and Commissioner Ashudo be representatives to this meeting.
Motion made and seconded, motion made by Commissioner McIntyre, seconded by Commissioner Morton, that Commissioner Ashudo and myself go to the meeting. All in favor say aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is notification of fireworks displays. Presenter is Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Actually, three different fire, fireworks displays that will need board approval per general statute. The first is on September twentieth, the Best Abaddon Festival, and on October, and then also on September twentieth, the City of Locust will be having an event where they will be having a fireworks display. And then October fourth, at the Stanley County Fairgrounds, as part of the Stanley County Fair festivities, they will have fireworks. And so we're asking, or these groups are asking for the board's approval of these three separate fireworks displays.
Can we do that all in one motion?
You certainly can.
I make a motion when you approve all three, and it's, make a note, it's good to know that Stanley County is not big enough to, where you have two fireworks on the same day, and it's not the Fourth of July, so that's a good thing.
Motion made by Commissioner Ashudo for approval. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Vice Chairman Donovan. All in favor say aye. Motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda as presented. Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval. Seconded by Commissioner Morton. All in favor say aye. Motion carried. Now it's time for public comment. Anyone like to speak to the board can come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll start with general comments. Mr. McIntyre?
I've talked enough, no comment.
To Mr. Morton?
No comment.
To Mr. Donovan?
I just wanted to report to the board that the Central Line Council of Governments, as part of the Connect project, but, but even beyond that, has been talking about air quality and water quality in our region. And they're, they're really the only regional entity that can convene and, and lead discussions about things like that that cross jurisdictional lines. So they've, they're beginning a process to talk about water quality and quantity, and they've invited some folks from Stanley County to participate. County manager and I, along with the city manager of Albemarle, did attend a meeting to, to kind of get that kicked off, and we'll be attending some, another meeting for sure. But we're, we're again, just trying to make people aware that, that water is a terrific asset to, to be able to utilize. And because of our location, the Stanley County certainly has water that can be utilized for economic development, as well as recreation, quality of life, as, as we've discovered through our branding process. And I just wanted you guys to know that that's, that's ongoing, and we'll be reporting our, our input and our findings from that as we go forward.
Commissioner Ashudo?
Hey, just, I'll be real quick on a few things. One, a quick shout-out to the Ag Center and Candace Moffett, they had a great ag day out there, I think they had like sixteen-hundred people. I think they had like sixteen hundred people. And that was pretty much a phenomenal event for an Ag Day.
I think the number was actually, um, over, over, it was over thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred. Okay. I just said it somewhere.
Four thousand.
It probably was. Was, how much was it? Four thousand, so. That was a very good turnout. They had a very good job with coordinating the vendors and everything else, so hats off to the folks, Lori Ivy and, um, Candace Moff and all the staff out there to do that. Secondly, hey, there's an owl attacking people on, um, Alzelia Street, Alzelia Ninth Street. So runners beware, two, three sets of runners have been literally attacked and hit in the head by a owl in the early morning on, um, you know where Alzelia Ninth Street is? So runners beware. And one guy, he was running, he got, something hit him in the head and he thought it might have been a tree branch he hit, so he circled around the block and he got nailed again and he looked up and there was a, the owl was swooping away, so the owl got one guy two different times.
Well, tell him to quit dressing like mice and they won't be doing that. Run in the daytime and he'll be asleep.
I know, I know. Sleep in, sleep in would be the answer to that. Um, and third, at animal control, at the, um, health board meeting last night, we had a pretty good discussion about, you know, cause I know there's been debate about moving the animal control under the sheriff's department or keeping it under how it is. And, you know, it's one of those things that, it could go either way because in all the surrounding counties, they have what they have. One is a standalone, it's either a standalone under like county management or under the sheriff's department. There's no one big benefit around the state, around our area that, that's any stronger than the other. I mean, that would ultimately be our decision and we'd have to rewrite the animal ordinance, which I don't know if anyone really wants to do for a while, at least another couple of years. And then, um, I think that's all I got.
I have no comment. County Manager?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
No comment, sir. Thank you.
Next item, I will, we'd need to go in, I'll entertain a motion to recess this meeting and go into closed session to discuss economic development according to G S one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, little a parentheses, four parentheses. Motion made by Vice Chairman Donovan for approval. Seconded by Commissioner McIntyre. All in favor say aye. We're in closed session.